You need it? Who needs it? I'm here.
I'm just a person to... So, it makes us too big for the question.
Yeah.
I'm here for... Why do you think it's... I think you should...
Correct. If you want... It's... 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 I can hardly see that it sounds like... Coming down very well. That's all we're trying to do. Buses drive. We're just... Just like they said.
Well, yeah. 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 Just... We talked about this.
This is... We had a couple... They listen. How about from the street?
Okay.
And then, um... We have... Jason, did he tell you the last one? Do you have one of those pencil tied in time? Sure. I don't see it doing that.
The city, you know, really does... God, yes. ...have some... Paradox. Some probably similar... Right. Finally, it's still... I'm not that... Well, yeah.
You have a section that could close off. It's impossible to come through. It's kind of... Yes. First time. Maybe a lot of... Right. Good.
Yeah. We're back. Yeah. One time, I was... Second, I was first. And then, I was...
Something you know, right? Yeah. I feel like I'm... I'm doing yours a bit. But it would be... Also, if you get a smaller, just find out. It's like... Yeah. Yeah. Didn't like that. I thought... There were here... What? Two and a half dollars. They were there. They weren't... Yeah.
No, it's gotta be somewhere in the... Yeah.
Well, then you can... The biggest thing is staying... It's... You should... People have... I have... The people that have stopped. The children's side of it. They don't know. That's great. It's true.
I wonder if that's one... Like, basically a complete rebuild? From the inside out? Or what's...
Thank you guys. You know, we have...
On the break inside?
Actually, so... Like shiny.
Why do you think I'm on the two set people?
They do tend to have any shiny shoes.
There's a pair of... There's some where... Officer Street. I'm not sure. He told you...
Aren't you...
Purchase him.
I'm just... Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
She called it.
Let's go. She was...
Yeah. Once...
Yeah. What you call it? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
The handsome up right in stone.
And you realize it was two.
And then, it's... It's... He went... And the hands that he got the stone and the town... Their trucks. And so... Because... It's... It hurt. It's not really... So, it just gets tighter.
Yeah. Okay.
It's the older one. It's bad. It's covered in... And, um... It's busy.
So, they...
Yeah.
I don't know if you know if it's...
Your...
Maybe not.
You're...
Usually it's made up like...
Does anyone know how to reach the social security?
Well, that's the most...
How to reach the social security?
Yeah.
Never seen you.
You need to change your name.
Yeah. I've been calling up frequently. I can't get through. So, I just thought, if anybody knew, we can hear about.
And it's been two and a half years since I...
I got it right here.
What? Is it like an eight six six number?
Eight three one seven one oh three is the direct line.
Yeah. Eight six six.
It's an eight six six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I went through this.
That's what I've been calling.
Yeah. You get a... Yeah. I got their... Cable number.
Basically, go in with your marriage or whatever, yeah?
But do they let you go in though? Because I don't even know if they'll let you go in.
Oh, I don't know if they're open.
That's what I've been... I'm like, they're trying to call.
You might be allowed at some point to go in though.
What's your direct line number?
Well, I have... That's what I've been calling again. I've been calling the eight six six number.
Okay.
And it brings her...
I will call and I'll get into almost...
It's... Sounds... It sounds the TV.
Nine three one seven one oh three. Yeah. That's the TV.
What's the TV?
Nine... Seven... I've been... Eight two... I've been...
And it does rank for days.
Really?
The other things to do is... Print out from the social security website a form SS five.
It's just...
And submit it with your own parents. You have to mail it over to them. But they'll mail it back to you.
I keep mailing it.
I know. I know.
That's why I'm asking you on this side. I can't get a hold of them. So, I was wondering, sorry.
They got it coming. So, that's... It's very... Reminding a lot of last year.
Yeah. The others been too.
If you just need a replacement social security card, you can do it online. But for the name change, you have to take your documents in.
I was just on it a little bit longer. Always mailing it. Yeah. Yeah. Wonder now, it's something when I bought my car. I would go... That was not... It was just like...
Is your name?
Yeah.
I'll mail my name type, too.
Right now, I don't know what to write. Because like, this is real as hell, but anything like... Official. Not, so... Yeah. I like... I don't know who I am. I'm like, I have to respond.
Well, your name is Emily Marl. But for social security purposes...
So, I can sign Emily Marl on anything?
Like, you're married.
Okay. I didn't know how that works. I need that paper back.
I just kind of put whatever I feel like at the moment. I don't know who I am. Change my name.
There we go.
Marvel?
It's... Be like... I'm not an action. Character. Superhero.
Just sorry, they're all stolen.
It's a long way. I have nothing else. What did it say? I know where you live. Now, you wrote it wrong. What is this?
I'm a senior teacher. Mrs. Stegner.
I know. We just... We... What? What? Oh. That's what Cory's doing. It's ridiculous. That's a terrible...
Well, logical.
What was that? Action?
Her... Her name is Mrs. Stegner.
She's on the... All these Stegosaurus.
I wasn't aware of this one.
All right. Welcome, everyone. We're going to open the discussion panel. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have guests here tonight with us to, uh, take a look at the capital project that's being proposed by the school district. So, Pat and Dee...
Sure.
...is here to share this information with us.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you guys so much for, uh, giving us the opportunity to come in here and talk to you guys about this capital project. Um, and we feel it's, uh, really important for the school and our community. Um, as Emery said... We just passed these out and I'll start talking. You guys like one?
Yeah, please. Sure.
Go.
Just...
This one? You sure? All right. So, just so... Because some of you, I don't know, are sitting face with the... I mean, my name's Pat. I'm the superintendent, uh, at Byron Virgin. New superintendent, but I've been at Byron Virgin for, uh, fifteen years. So, uh, I'm walking into a, a, a project that we are excited about. But I just appreciate the opportunity to kind of talk to you guys about this. We are not going to take up too much of your time. We value your time. So, again, thank you. So, I'm Pat. He, as I said, superintendent. And I have, um, some members of our team that... If you guys just want to introduce yourselves.
Lori Prins, I'm the business administrator.
Roger Caldwell, director of facilities.
Hello, I'm Jason Benfante. I'm with Clark Patterson Lee.
And I'm Cory Huntsinger, also with Clark Patterson Lee.
So, if you flip over into the, the first page, just, um... Really, what we're not... We're going to talk to you guys for a few minutes tonight about is just the capital project planning process, so that you understand what goes into that. Some focus areas of the project. The scope of the work. Our financing plan. Uh, a potential project timeline. And, um, some boat information. We'll give you that information. And then, if you guys have any questions, uh, we'd be happy to answer those, those questions. So, with that, I'm going to pass it over to, um, these guys.
Good evening. Um, once again, my name is Jason Benfante. I'm with CPL. Uh, CPL has been the architect of record for the last twenty years for the Byron Virgin Central School District. Uh, we're very familiar with the facilities. And as part of this project, we did an assessment of, uh, all the facilities in the dist... in the district. Um, and really did a top-down sort of re-review of the building health. Um, over the course of our investigations, we found things that, uh, needed improvement. We also sifted through some needs and wants. Uh, there's some programmatic enhancements that we're looking to do. There's also some healthy building initiatives that we're looking to, uh, work into the project. Um, and, uh, with, uh, feedback from the district, we were able to build, um, a list of... A comprehensive list of needs. Um, from that point, um, we were very selective on what work that we put into the project. We wanted to make sure we maximized aid eligibility. And, uh, we're putting enhancements into the project that we're going to give the district. Um, great energy efficiency, safety, security, those sorts of, uh, priorities. And, of course, no additional tax impact was something that helped us guide which priorities fit.
So, that's, that's a important piece. We want to tell you that there will be no additional tax impact with this, uh, capital project. Uh, our areas, like as Jason mentioned, obviously, our number one priority is the health, safety, and security for all of the people that come to the school every day. Asset preservation. Um, you know, we want the best for our kids. Um, but being mindful of, you know, our taxpayers, uh, looking at our acad... Academic in programming enhancements. And then, uh, as Jason also mentioned, ed... Energy efficiency.
All right. Yeah. Once again, guys, good evening. Um, I've been with the district for twenty-four years. So, I'm just going to go through a lot of the focus areas and the scopes just from thirty thousand foot level. But I guess being at the district for such a long time, I remember when some of this stuff was somewhat new. But now, we're looking at life cycle replacement and stuff like that. So, at the elementary school, uh, we're looking to put in a new boiler plant uh, and do some domestic, uh, hot water system upgrades. Uh, main focus, uh, the main intention is going to be over at the junior, senior high schools. We've got a few slides here we're going to go through. So, we're looking at exterior window replacement. Uh, some of the windows on certain portions of the building are original. Um, so, we're looking at do some upgrades there. Uh, building envelope improvements would be like your masonry, you know, your mortar and all that stuff pointing up some of the... Some of those areas on the exterior of the building. Uh, roof replacements. We've been working through, uh, various different projects trying to get, um, the roofs, um, up to date. One area that we're really going to focus on is, uh, one that's been in place since the... It's the seventh, eighth grade wing. It's... It was built in nineteen sixty-three. So, it is more than overdue for replacement. So, that's in this project. Uh, some of your mechanical system upgrades. Uh, believe it or not, we still have, uh, some air handlers that date back to the original building in nineteen fifty-five. They don't build stuff like they used to, but it's time to, uh, replace that because we can't get parts for that anymore. So, um, again, in the junior, senior high school, domestic, uh, water system upgrades are going to be happening. Uh, site sanitary system improvements. This would be, uh, a portion of the sanitary line that is still, uh, clay tile. So, there's about three hundred feet that we have to replace. And then, we'll be in good shape there. Uh, again, if I have missing something, make sure you guys step in there. Let me know. So, this one right here is a, is a, is a big focus and I think, uh, centerpiece to the project, uh, at the junior, senior high school. It's the gymnasium renovation. And along with that, uh, is the locker room. So, this gymnasium and locker rooms really have not been touched since nineteen fifty-five. Um, one area of the floor, uh, had some moisture issues at one point in time. And, you know, that definitely needs to have some attention. So, we're looking at putting a whole new floor in there. Uh, basically, a whole new facelift in the, in the gymnasium. If you were to walk into locker rooms, uh, today, they look the same as they did in nineteen fifty-five. So, definitely, uh, a much needed upgrade there. And that is... Um, also, underneath the junior, senior high school would be getting outside to some of your athletic fields. Uh, track is due for, uh, the surface needs to be, uh, replaced on the... The rubber surface on the track needs to be replaced. Along with that would be the scoreboard. A scoreboard being put in at the track. Athletic field improvements, which would, uh, be down at the soccer stadium down back. So, looking to put, uh, under drain in there. Uh, new sod for the field. Uh, new scoreboard there as well. Soccer stadium lighting replacement. So...
We're fortunate enough to be able to play, um... Give our kids the opportunity to play at night. If anyone's been back there to look at those lights, we just cringe looking at them, knowing that if the... If one of them goes out, uh, we're not... The kids are not going to have that opportunity or they're not going to be playing, uh, at home. So...
We're fortunate enough that the other way knows that it was done in nineteen eighty-five. And it's time to put an upgrade down there. And we just had electrician in a couple of weeks ago to help us, uh, along with the help from the village. Electricians to, to get that up and going so we could have our first game. Uh, let's see what else we have. That's an auditorium. Uh, this building really has been untouched since nineteen seventy-three, when it was built. So, any of you that have been in that building, uh, it's kind of... Do for an upgrade. Along with the auditorium is a all-new boiler plant. And as you can see upstairs in the mezzanine, some of that older equipment is from nineteen seventy-three. That will be, also be, uh, upgraded. Pool equipment upgrades. Um... This is the pool filter system along with some of the areas in the pool common area. Um, we're going to be... We've had somewhat of a little bit of a leak and we have to do some investigative work. So, we're breaking up all the, the tile around the outside. It's a good time to replace it when we figure out where this leak's at. So... Buses drive. Now, if you look, uh, right here, you may be able to see a little bit of it. But this, this is going to encompass the area that is really underneath the buses. Um, heavy buses sitting on blacktop doesn't usually work out too well. So, we're looking to put concrete under there so we don't have the ruts. They have some...
All right. Just one thing about the auditorium. I know with COVID hitting, um, that is our, our... One of our purposes for that is we want the community to be able to use that. Um, so, yeah, while it benefits our kids, we want that to benefit the community. I know with... Obviously, with COVID, we haven't been able to do some of those things. But, but hopefully, we can get back. I know, um, Gill and Grant started up some stuff, um, at the pool. But, um, that's just another, uh... Just wanted you guys to, to, to hear that as well.
So, I guess to summarize this project in my years of being at the district, I would say that it touches a lot of different... A lot of areas throughout the district that I don't think we've done in, in previous projects. And CPL, um, is our architect director. Campus Construction is our construction management firm. And our construction... They're on a construction team at the school district. And they've done a great job. So, I want to make sure I... We note that. So...
If there's anything else you guys would like to say? I'm done talking. Thank you. I just... I want to invite Lori Prins, our business official, up just to talk through some of the... Just quickly through some of the financing.
Some, uh, project budget summary page. You can see we have the cost broken down by building and the focus really is at the high school, the majority. The last project, the focus obviously was at the elementary. There's, um, some things we weren't able to do at the elementary, which is, um, split up the, the heating furnace, right, Roger? Which we're looking to do. So, this time, the auditorium will have its own separate and the elementary will have its own separate. Right now, it comes from the auditorium, goes underground over to the elementary. Not super efficient, to be honest. So, it's just a little bit of that work at the elementary. But, uh, again, the high school is at seventy-three percent of the total cost. And then, you can see the second there is the auditorium being seventeen percent of that. Total project estimated is seventeen million, one oh seven, eight oh two. And on the next page is the breakdown where those monies are coming from. So, the state building aid, this is a lowballing, I guess I will say. The worst-case scenario. We're planning on being at seventy-four percent. Ideally, we'll have... That'd be better than that. The difference of that and the, the total cost for two million is in our capital reserve that we will be applying for this project. And then, we have the difference of whatever the state aid comes in at, in the capital reserve. That those two added together and the difference from the grand totals, we have money set aside in fund balance truthfully that we're looking to put towards it.
So, the district overall has done a very good job financially planning for, for this.
We've been preparing.
So that there's no additional tax impact on our taxpayers. So, so just with that, um, there is some information. It's on our website. Uh, we'll have a video coming out that highlights this, too. Um, if any of you have hit it on our Facebook page or anything like that. We did send out a bulletin to all, uh, district residents. I have some copies back there. If anyone would like that, I can pass that out. Um, and if anyone has any, um, you know, questions about any of those documents, please, please call our, uh... You can call our business officer or district clerk. The vote is on Thursday, October seventh. Uh, that is going to be from one to nine in our junior, senior high school cafeteria. So, if you're familiar with our building, you can come right in the loop. You can park there. There's two doors. You can walk in. Um, it's pretty easy, uh, in and out. We will have a public meeting on Thursday, the thirtieth at six thirty. We'll be going through, uh, a lot of this. But if you guys wanted to take a look at this, process it, and come and ask questions, please feel free to do that. But if you do have any other questions aside from tonight, don't hesitate to give myself a call or, uh, the district office. So, with that being said... Cory?
Not up to time.
Yeah, we can...
Oh, why skip the timeline? Sorry, Cory.
The timeline. Uh, so, with a successful vote on October seventh, we'll start putting print to paper, meeting with user groups. It's going to take about a year to get the project designed and submitted to the state education department and get their approval. Um, they issue our building permit. After that, we'll go to bid. And construction will start, uh, in spring of twenty-three and then wrap up in, uh, fall of twenty-four. So, it'll be two summers worth of work. Um, it'll be split up, uh, just to keep things as minimal as possible destruction to district. But...
Yeah. That's why the, the summer, the summertime, right? For that. So, the bus impact on kids being... Does anyone have any questions for our, for our team?
I have a question. I just want to commend you on the condition of the building and the way that it's been maintained. I mean, those are old structures and, you know... Been in buildings where you're working around all of those things for a long period of time and the construction. You know, moving classrooms all over the place is not fun. Summer work is, you know, the best way, obviously, to do that. But it sounds like a great project and well-needed at this particular time.
I, I just... Just curious, is there any of these, any of these improvements being made to meet, uh, state standards or...
Um, well, I think almost anything in the project is going to meet a more current code compliance than what we've got, right? So if we're doing roofing, we're going to make sure that the new roof meets energy code. It's going to be a better performing facility. Even right down to some of the locker rooms that we're renovating. You know, back when they were constructed, there really was no consideration for handicap compliance. But now, you know, we're, we're, we would be reconstructing and renovating these. We want to build that thoughtfulness into the new plan as well as provide some more, you know, privacy for inclusion and that sort of thing. So I think you can point to anything in the project and whatever we design per state requirements is going to have to meet code compliance and just be, you know, a long-term performer. The, the, the goal is, you know, 15 to 20 years is what we want to get out of the construction that we're putting into the facility.
My other question was about the roofing. I know, pretty sure this was not 10 years ago, but almost maybe 10 years ago, there was some, I thought some roofing done.
There was, yes, you're right. I think over the course of the last 20 years, we've been slowly picking away at the roofs. It's been, you know, the, the high school is a large, large building. Schedule wise, like you said, summer construction only allows you to get so much roofing peeled off and put back in a certain timeframe. Cost wise, you can only afford so much, you know, as we're looking at the projects that we're master planning. So we're very, very cost conscious. We want to do as much work as we can within the summer. We don't want to bite up too much, you know, and we also want to be cognizant of what the market's doing. Sometimes, you know, there's fluctuations. Most of the products that we're using are petroleum based. We want to make sure that the commodities are still something that we're, we're keeping an eye on. We have a good understanding of where the market's headed and what we can afford to do.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And we just appreciate if you could spread the word and come out and vote.
Any other questions?
Is the capital reserve, is that still going to be in relatively good shape after you take your 8.5% or down the road here coming for the tax rate? Is that going to be increased to build that capital reserve back up?
The voters originally authorized this capital reserve to a maximum of 2 million, and we are at that now. So if this project passes and they agree to expand that for this project, we will probably be putting out to the voters again the establishment of a new capital reserve with a new limit on it to go forward.
We just appreciate your time. Thank you so much. And I would really like to say, I mean that, our board soccer team is playing right now. I'm trying to get over there to see them, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Anna Rae, do you mind if I just leave these back here if anyone wants to grab a bulletin? Feel free to do it.
Lecturing over there, that's great.
Sure.
Thank you. Hey, Jan, we have a second presentation. Eric Weiss is here, representing the fire department. And we should have a copy of the proposed budget.
Yeah, I'm going to also pass out a, some additional information here if you could grab one and pass it around.
That's the CPL people again.
I know, I was, I didn't realize they were going to bring that. So, wanted to give you guys a quick update first before we kind of go through the numbers. So, as the mayor said, I, we did email the draft budget to you, but there's some additional information in this packet I'd like to share with both the town and the village. So, quick update on the department. Currently, we have 45 what we call active members. We also have 12 what we call active life members. So the difference is a life member has 20 years of service in the department. So, so with 57 technically active people, some of the people that can respond to calls. Do want to clarify though, that there's always a level of actin- of activeness. So, so it doesn't mean they're responding to 90% of the calls, 50%. So for example, myself, I'm, I'm an active member per our, per our bylaws. But realistically, I'm about 10% of the call just because of the other stuff I do, you know, with work, et cetera. So, so a lot, lot of misconceptions there when people say, hey, you got 57 people, that's great. But reality is, we always look at it, you have 57, but I would say the bulk of the work is done by about 25% of those people. I think you, you've probably seen some information lately on the Dennis County Task Force for Emergency Services that I volunteered to be on the board on that and, and to chair it. So we have been meeting regularly. The county has hired a consultant, municipal resources, to help guide us through the process. They're currently in the information gathering phase. So they held a kickoff meeting a couple of months ago where they had four members of MRI come out. They were here for approximately three days, whirlwind tour. Going to GAM, going to Ledge, meeting with departments, you know, meeting with chiefs, et cetera. Some, some local business leaders, Chamber, GCDC, et cetera. Kind of get a lay of the land. Task force was given, tasked with getting a bunch of information, so, so call data, maps, you know, inventories of equipment, et cetera. So that's in their hands. They're, they're processing that. Game plan is they're going to be back out here in November sometime. It's going to be a team of two this time, not, not four, with the intention of a little more focused meetings with departments. Really kind of to review the data, not going to give any findings yet. It's really just going to give, okay, here's, here's some facts and figures. Hopefully to wake some people up. I think a lot of people realize it's, this is long overdue. We've been hearing a lot of positive feedback even from departments. And a lot of times you, you know, a lot of times people get defensive, you know, when you think, what are you, what are you doing? Why are you going to change what we're doing? But reality is, I think a lot of people realize that it's long overdue and we're, we're approaching that trouble phase rapidly. So, hope is, you know, early next year, we get a lot of manual recommendations. And then it's really going to be up to, you know, municipalities and departments to, you know, fight and battle over what, what changes are. And this is not just the fireside, this is also the MSI. So, that's underway. As far as some department, individual department updates, so one of the major projects we accomplished last year, trickling into this year, was our kitchen renovation. So the, the kitchen there was really the original kitchen, you know, for the fire hall, was set up for, you know, bingo, all the events we had. We, we did a renovation, a lot of the work was done in-house. So kind of simplified a little bit, you know, we had all the industrial, you know, kitchen oven and, and, you know, bread oven and all that stuff. So all that went away, more basic, but again, long overdue. A lot of the equipment wasn't, wasn't functioning properly. So that was completed. I don't know if you guys are aware, but the chief did have a personal incident recently, got a motorcycle accident. So he's banged up for a little bit. Hopefully he'll be back in action, you know, six weeks or so. But he had, yeah, he had pins in his ankle and wrist and road rash, so. He decided to battle a deer with a motorcycle when the deer won. But he's doing good. You know, we're definitely communicating a little daily. But for now, kind of Gary Dean's kind of, kind of interim chief, I guess, you know, kind of handling a lot of day-to-day stuff. FEMA grant, we have not heard any good news yet, you know, as far as an award. However, you know, they, they have not closed the award process yet, so there's still money to be divvied out. So we did apply for new air packs. So our SCBA's and the bottles and the masks, those are, you'll see later here, those are in our equipment plan. But, you know, if an opportunity exists and we kind of felt, you know, with COVID, you know, all that stuff, we could maybe help, you know, word it where potentially we could get a grant. So no, no denial yet, which is personally good news. You know, banquet, we've, we've kind of put that on hold, obviously, for, for last year. This year, we are going to do something in a couple of weeks, but not, not really a, you know, we're not going to invite municipalities. It's really just for our own members. So if you do see tents up at the firehouse in a couple of weeks, next October 2nd, we're going to be doing it on a Saturday. So more of a picnic style, it's just kind of games, get our, get our members together outside. So hopefully next year we can pick back up with the, with the regular banquet schedule. We are looking at some, you know, furniture upgrades and it's really not going to cost us a dime, thankfully. So CPL, we're moving our office. And part of the deal is we're getting essentially all the furniture from our landlord. So we're going to be acquiring a lot of gently used furniture for the fire department, which will be going to kind of offset, you know, some future costs. Another kind of expense that we went through this year, about $10,000, was computer system upgrade. You guys know computers don't last forever and we were about eight years into it and, you know, kind of going through the process again. So we did upgrade our, kind of a little mini server and our desktops and laptops. So we should be good and that kind of went for another, another eight to 10 years. So what I did pass out to you, so the, the front page is the proposed budget. So a few things I do want to point out. One is, at, at the top, you'll see the percent changes between the municipalities. 2% for one of our counties has been our, our standard per the contract with them. So that, that cannot change. Town of Riga, they typically, typically send us a letter saying, you know, we really need to be at 2%. And the reason they, they have to be there is that's really the only town tax they have is related to fire protection. So they don't want to, you know, deal with the, you know, New York State and overriding their, their tax cap. So there has been years past where some of the other departments didn't ask for the full 2%, and they weren't able to accommodate, you know, us going above 2%. But it sounds like this year, all, all three departments are going to be essentially at the 2% increase. So that leaves, you know, where the remaining increase falls on, which is the town and the village. You'll, you'll see the breakdown here. And the reason it's different, just a reminder, is it's based on assessed valuation. So that's kind of how it's been set up for how many years now. But, so every year we get the updated assessed valuation numbers from the county. And that's why, like I said, it shows that unfortunately for the village this year, you know, 4.23% of the increase is related to, or it's 4.23% increase not related to the village. So overall, we're looking for an increase of approximately $7,000, $7,200. Some notables, fire medic insurance, just based on seeing years pass. We're dropping that budget by $4,000. Workers' comp went up by $1,200 this year, and that's through the county. New York State cancer law, that policy did increase, actually last year. We did budget 4,000 last year, but unfortunately we're going to take about a $2,000 hit because of some, some policy changes that they have internally. The long-term maintenance, vehicle replacement, and if you look down further, major equipment replacement, those are per our long-term plans, which I included copies in this packet. So it's, it's based on some, some planning documents based on, you know, estimated capital costs for, for the next 20 years. Other than that, safety equipment, we were proposing a $2,000 increase primarily because of the cost of turnout gear is, like everything else in this country right now, it is going up. So a turnout gear set to outfit an active interior firefighter is about $4,000. And that, that's climbing. So that's, that's bunkers, boots, helmet, gloves. So typically we try to do five sets a year. For our interior firefighters, it's basically a 10-year lifetime, life, life limit on it. So, so again, we try to make sure we're, we're complying with that guideline. The last one is the, the host tests and replacement. So the, the cost from the vendor that comes in to do our host testing did increase this year. And as I said, we're just reflecting the increase for next year's budget. So I did, again, include, so the next, next page is really just a refresher of what 2021 was. You know, last year, you know, discussions with all the COVID stuff, you know, especially in the town. Town was more of the driving factor than anything, and, you know, what can you guys do to, to help out? So we ended up dropping our budget last year by, by $9,000. And then I also included the 2020 budget in here. So essentially, you know, with 2022 budget, we're really getting closer to the 2020 budget. So we were $320,000 in '32 in 2020 and proposed $319,000 for 2022. So after the 2020 budget page is the long-term fire medic maintenance, long-term plan. So a couple notable items on here. Truck bay floors, which we're still, still haven't completed yet, but that, that's an expense. This is tied into one of our SAM grants. So we're still playing some games with the state on that a little bit, trying to get those funds released. So we haven't pulled the trigger on it, but that's $50,000 for an epoxy coating system on the floor. 2028, we're, we're setting aside $70,000 for essentially a new roof. Now, this is not the entire roof. What we look at is the old bingo hall, essentially. So where, where the town is and where our training room is, that money comes out of our, our, our social reserve fund. That's really paid for primarily by the town lease. So their lease funds, we, we put aside a portion of money to help maintain that part of the building. So this is really the, the front half and the offices. Building generator that was replaced, I think about 10 years ago. So, you know, we earmarked 2034 to replace that generator. And then the other big ticket item, 2038 would be, you know, milling and, and repaying the driveway. So that was just done two years ago. But we anticipate that coming up in 2038. So the next page is our major equipment. So really the main two things I want to point out, or main, main, main column, I would say, is that SCBA line item. That's, that's really the, the biggest ticket item. The bottles have essentially a roughly 15-year lifespan for the, for the carbon fiber, or the carbon bottles. And that replacement cost is about $55,000. And then we're projecting replacing the air packs themselves in 2032 for $250,000. And again, that's, that's the item that we applied for the FEMA grant. So again, if we get that, then this, this plan will be modified accordingly for, for the better, I would say. The next page is the vehicle replacement plan. So this outlines our, our vehicle purchases, gives us some guidelines. So, you know, reminder, we, we kind of did consolidate the fleet recently. Sold our rescue and tanker and bought one, one piece of apparatus versus two. Biggest thing to point out here, if you see the column where it says 26, there's a dollar figure, $572,500, and then, and then four, or three annual payments for $122,500. So that, that is going to be for our ladder truck. And why I'm pointing that out is based on our projections, that's going to be the last time we're going to have to borrow money to purchase a fire truck. That's been our goal along with having this plan, if you want to get out of paying interest for, for these fire trucks. So, you know, things may change with this plan. I think potentially for the better with the task force. Depending on how the conversations go with looking at, you know, versus looking at any of the departments and what your needs are. Let's look at the county as a whole and, you know, maybe by, maybe in two years, we decide we don't need to replace a ladder truck. You know, we got one in Leroy in Brockport. So I think there's going to be a lot of those conversations that are, it's going to be tough conversations. A lot of people aren't going to agree, but I think a lot of that stuff's going to head in that direction. Next page, I just wanted to provide you with last year's final budget. So we were $17,000 to the good. Mindset has really always been, not with everybody, probably a lot of municipalities and entities have these battles of, you know, is money left to spend it? We've kind of squashed that mindset a lot. So we were $17,000 to the good. So what we end up doing, anytime we have leftover funds, we roll them into one of our, one of our reserve accounts. That's one of our, our, our long-term maintenance plans with the intention that, you know, we can decrease our percent increases over time. So every year, we look at that plan and what money we can roll over from the budget if any is left over. So, so that was what was done really for the past five years. Next page, really just a snapshot of our, our social budget. Our, our social budget's pretty much funded by our, the, the 2% insurance refund, also the lease from the town. So, you know, last year, obviously, and this year, we're going to be, you know, way under budget primarily because of the banquet and some of the social functions that are really out there. Some of the sponsorship opportunities, you know, fire prevention at the school, a lot of those things are still on hold. So, so, you know, we took a budget, you know, $27,000 a year, but we're going to be, we're going to be well under that for, for, for this year and last year. And then the last page is really just a snapshot of our current accounts. Just to be, you know, open with you guys, and we'll do the same thing with the town. So the fire medic checking is our, our fire medic budget account. The, our, our social account, again, is really those funds that are provided by the town lease. We use those funds for, again, our banquet, fire prevention, sponsorship opportunities, you know, whether or not it's park days. And we use it for, you know, internal dinners. We can, we, we've kind of gotten habit every, every other month, we have a dinner for the members at our monthly meetings. So that's what those funds are used for. Memorial account, really no designated use, but these are funds that people donate to the department on behalf of, you know, what they see as loved one, et cetera. And again, we kind of have the argument every few years, what are you going to use that for? But really, it's, you know, in the past, it's been for things like, okay, AEDs or, or something that can really benefit the community. And, you know, we really just want to use this, you know, my, my, my opinion, I think a lot of opinion, everybody else, is people donate the money to the department for that money to be used to benefit the, the community. So, so it's really earmarked for that purpose, a dream that's really for, could be a new standard that comes out or some new piece of equipment we think would benefit the community. Fire medic long-term maintenance, that's, that's the reserve account for our, our long-term maintenance of the building. The major equipment is for those things like the air packs, so that's our savings account for those items. The social building maintenance, again, that, that's from that building lease fund that's going to help pay for, you know, the roof on the backside or when air conditioning fails or, or those items. So that, that's our reserve account. The Harley's leftover from the Harley rattle days, again, no real designation for that. We pull out of it three years. We kind of do that as our rainy day emergency fund, honestly. And then our vehicle replacement line item. So probably more than you wanted to know, but again, I'd rather give you more information than a little.
Eric, we appreciate the information because for a very long time, it, it didn't happen.
I know. I know, that's how it used to be.
Yeah.
I've heard the stories. Here's a number, sign it. We're going to do the same presentation for the town, I think, next, I think it's next Tuesday, I believe, so I'm going there, so. Any questions?
Looks like a lot of money reserves, but when you look at the price tags and that type of equipment.
Yeah, you know, the business you're into, it's just crazy. No, it's, it's nuts. And so we're just kind of tired of, like, these trucks we're doing 10-year payment on, you're paying $16,000 in interest and it just.
Just your flashlights are $300.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's crazy.
Yep.
I buy them too.
Yep.
They, they are good.
Yep, yep.
This may seem like a silly question, but why is, why is the percentage at different places paid based on assessment value in that population?
Just what the formula was set up years ago. I, I wasn't, I wasn't part of that process when it was set up.
It seems like.
And it was really just the agreement, I think, between, between town and the village. So I don't know how long ago it was, honestly.
Seems like a higher population would mean more calls. So.
Yeah. Could be perceived, but you could also look at, you know, miles of road, you can, it's probably 20 different ways you could cut this. I honestly haven't looked at it. I haven't evaluated it.
Take a lot of their stuff that way.
Just something that makes sense for a fire. What do I know? I just look here.
Um, just, I don't know. Is that something that the task force is looking at or there?
As far as the, this, as far as how, how the village and the town break it up, probably not. You know, like the task force is really more focused on what's, how are we going to serve our community five, 10 years from now?
So it would be interesting if things are combined, how they figure that out, like, how they share those with the lots. We like, we share some of the fire.
So I think some of the mindset is, you know, you just, you look at pretty much every department has a tank in their field. And with all the water system going, every department needs to have a tank. Again, we need a ladder here truly, where we got one, we were in Brockport. I really think ambulance service might got sent, is going to be a more county level. Sounds like a little meeting a few weeks ago between emergency management offices for a lot of the counties in western New York. And they're all having the same issues where, you know, even the volunteers are tough, obviously, and, and the paid, and the paid services. And, and the paid, and the paid services, you know, when they're paying their drivers fifteen bucks an hour and they get paid fifteen bucks an hour to work it, to work, there's something a lot more stressful. Which is, it's a tough market. So things like purchasing policies, you know, we've talked about, each department buys stuff on their own versus pay each year, here's five departments, they hose, there's got to be some economy to scale of, of those items. Or even fire trucks. I mean, if you could, forbid we all come to an agreement, we buy the same style pumper. So, you know, if we needed to buy one and Pembroke needed to buy one, it was basically the same truck. How hard to buy two of them? Substantial savings versus, because they're all custom. So, you know, but a lot of, a lot of the price being in the design and development of those trucks. So if you include them on one piece of equipment, obviously substantial saving there. So, there's going to be a lot of little stuff like that. Hopefully in fact, they do bottom line or so.
Any other questions for Eric?
Okay.
Thank you.
Home for that.
Have a good one.
You too.